Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:07 PM. And if we can have a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Chappell.
Here, I think.
Commissioner Sworzler.
Yes, I'm here.
Here.
Commissioner Cronin, absent. Commissioner Mahoney.
Here.
Commissioner Middlestadt. Absent. Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Paris Gavis.
Here.
All right, rolls complete.
I have a chance of the March 30th, 2020 meeting from last Monday night?
Yes.
If there's no corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
This is Sally. I move to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? I don't hear your position. Okay, minutes are approved.
I'm sorry, I had.
Okay, we'll move along to visitor. What was that, Karen?
I'm sorry, I had my screen covered during the minutes. Who was the seconder?
I was, Alex.
Then we'll move ahead to the visitor and public comments. We have visitor or public comments tonight?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
What would you like to speak about, Jennifer?
Okay, so my name is Jennifer Flores. I am a part of the Historic Preservation Committee, but I'm also a resident in the historic district in a historic home. And so we received notification of a proposal for a change in the downtown overlay kind of code and stuff. And I just have some questions about that. We were given four options, I guess, that you guys were given. And options two, options one and four are completely out for me as a resident. But options two and three are very similar. And so we wondered, my husband, this is my husband, John.
Hey, guys.
He and I wondered what the difference was between the two. I also read in it that we're removing the half block from the historic residential overlay zone, which I did not find anything about. I found a downtown overlay code, but I didn't find anything on historic residential overlay code. And let me tell you, I have a whole bunch of stuff printed out on the historic district and the multi-use pedestrian-friendly all where we live, which is 434 South Main Street. So I've spoken with Brad Harris. I know that he is concerned about the setback that's required in the downtown overlay, which I am as well, because my driveway is on Main Street and the downtown overlay requires that he build to the sidewalk, which is ridiculous. When my driveway is there, it's a safety hazard. Because if I'm pulling out of my driveway and someone's jogging down the road and this giant building is next to my home, that's a safety hazard. I can't see them coming down the road if there's a big building blocking me. So there were just some areas of concern with that. And also in the Independent Development Code, Subchapter 59, which is relates to historic area, there in 59.80 subsection A says the purpose, which says new construction within a historic district, application and review. The purpose of reviewing new construction is that the exterior design of new construction within historic district is to ensure that new structures over 100 square feet are compatible with the character of that district. Now, I don't know when the downtown overlay was come up with, but I know that it goes down to F Street. And I know that there are at least six homes within that area. So I don't know if when it was come up with, they were just hoping that these houses would go away, disappear. I don't know. I don't know which code supersedes the other, because this is obviously a historic part of town. Henry Hill's house is right across from the Civic Center. He founded this town. And so I feel like we really need to respect the historic homes on Main Street as well as just, you know, trying to build uptown. And I certainly don't want something like the atrocities over there on the waterfront next door to my house. So we just need some clarification on this and what the difference is between options two and three. And I guess that's kind of why we're here.
Okay. Well, Fred, would this be something you should address right now? I mean, and I sent you a question earlier about the letter we received, asking if we could postpone our decision tonight. So I guess my question is, do we need to open the public hearing again for Jennifer and her husband to discuss this? Or are we going to postpone until we hear back from the Historic Preservation Commission?
So my.
Did you catch all that?
Yeah, I did. So my recommendation is, yeah, you'd probably want to open back up the public hearing and just discuss what you got from Curtis in your email that everybody received those emails that got sent out earlier today, essentially. I mean, we can talk about it once the public hearings opened up, but that's essentially what Jennifer is asking about, too. It specifically relates to the Historic Preservation Code. The reason that you can't find the historic residential overlay in our code is because it's something that's in the proposed Historic Preservation Code. And that's why that's sort of, I mean, that's what's bringing all of this up. So, so, yeah, we can definitely open that back up and we can address that at that time.
Okay. Do we, I could just go ahead and state that we'll open up the public hearing again. And we don't, do you have to read the script again and all that?
No, I think that's fine.
Or do we, do we know?
Karen, I don't have to reread it, do I?
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think so.
I'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing. What was that? File number LA-2018. What was that? That's the word. That's, yeah, that's the right one. LA-2018-04. So where do we proceed from here?
So, I mean, I guess, I guess we can acknowledge the fact that Jennifer just brought up her concerns about the downtown overlay zone just in the earlier comments and the historic residential overlay zone and how they relate to the proposed Historic Preservation Code. We can acknowledge that here and I'll just repoint you to Curtis's letter. Curtis was appointed as the spokesman for the Historic Preservation Commission as this got forwarded to the Planning Commission. And because it got sent to the Planning Commission, he was, he was going to be the spokesman for the Historic Preservation Commission. He essentially requested that in light of Mr. Harris's comment that the Historic Preservation Commission take, take a look at it and formulate a recommendation based on the four options that I gave you folks. He just felt like procedurally it would be a good precedent to set, to have them just sort of weigh in on it so they could give you good advice on the code. He didn't feel comfortable himself speaking on it individually as a representative of the commission. So I respect that. I think that his request is completely fine. So I don't know. Is there anything else I should add to that? Are there any questions of me based on that?
Well, it says in his letter to us that they're meeting on the 15th of April and would like us to not make a final recommendation until after that time. So that would be, do we go ahead and have another meeting in April? Or can we push that to our May meeting?
We would do it then at our May meeting.
Our May meeting. Okay. Well, any questions other commissioners have of Jennifer and her husband?
I just want to say thanks for, thanks for talking to us and taking the time. I think this is a little bit confusing just because, yes, this is a proposed overlay. So it doesn't exist yet. And then, and so we've had similar kind of questions around what, I mean, this is basically what's in, what's not. It's still, and Fred, you can correct me, this is still, there's still historic, there's still historic district, but then there's an overlay on top of that. So it's not completely eliminating historic district. It's just for any of the residences that are still on the overlay, still within the overlay, they would need to abide by the new sort of rules and the new zone. So I think that's the clarification, just for you, for what this all, how this has all come about. Jennifer.
Okay, so because what I have, the subchapter 59 for Historic Preservation, I got from the city's website, so it is already there. So that's unclear, too. And the downtown overlay is already there.
But unless what you're saying is the historic residential overlay zone does not exist yet, that's a proposal.
Yes. So that's correct. Yeah, so that's, that's the, and what got brought up at the last, last week at the meeting was that, and I'm sort of drawing a blank on his name, but he's got the, yeah, so he's got the property right on the corner. And so he, and so he was bringing up sort of his own, his concerns about how this is all, how this would play with any kind of ideas that he has. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been over to the house and I live in the house right next door to that, which is why, you know, I have or we have such great concerns, too. Because he was talking about putting a three-story building there, which I am not down with in the least. And so I have done all my research and I have a whole binder here of stuff, you know, as far as the Historic Preservation Code that's already listed. You know, that's why I have subchapter 59 pulled up and highlighted. And I do, you know, I don't want a three-story building next to my house. So.
So one, I mean, Mr. Harris, I believe, is at the meeting. Is that correct, Karen? So, I mean, it would be warranted to hear from him as well, just if he has any thoughts or concerns about the Historic Preservation Commission weighing in on this as well. So there he is.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Harris.
How you guys doing? You know, I was just reading through the options that you put out here. And option two is really what the conversation that Jennifer and I have had with each other regarding the, you know, the setback language that would allow us to do some kind of setback rather than build up to the street like a, like the typical downtown building. I was looking at option three, two, which I think is a really similar result, except the only thing about option three is now you've got, you know, you have your zoning and then you have your downtown overlay and then now you're placing a third overlay. So you have these three things that are all kind of, it's not clarifying anything. It's kind of seems more or less like it's muddying things up by doing that. Number two looks like it allows something different than just the, you know, a normal, the, the normal downtown overlay where you're allowing for some kind of a setback if it's necessary for, for residential structures. And so when I initially talked to Jennifer, that's what I was telling her was really the problem that we were all facing if we try and work on this thing together is that the code says you got to build to the line, you know, and, you know, I'm really open to the idea of doing something so that her driveway is not obstructed, but that would still fit the downtown. And if you put, you know, in the future, there's more downtown buildings there, it still would fit and, and not have that, because their houses are set back like 20 feet or something, you're really, if we put that overlay over it, I think you're really going to end up with a permanently residential block in the downtown area. So, so I, if my input on this, if I had to give one is that I feel like option two is the most flexible while still accomplishing the goals, you know, for the residential there.
Okay, any commissioners have questions of Mr. Harris? Nobody? Or any more questions of Jennifer or her husband?
This is Sally. I have a question for Jennifer. Are you in agreement with the request we got from Curtis Tidmore about having the Historic Preservation Commission review this first before we make a decision?
I think it's a good idea to have the Historic Preservation Committee work jointly with the Planning Commission so that, you know, Mr. Harris is saying, like, things are pretty muddy right now. And I don't know what the future plans were or are for downtown, but these houses were here first. And trying to extend, I don't know if they're trying to extend three-story buildings down to the Civic Center at this point, but these houses were here first. And at least three of them are still in good shape. So, you know, I, I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. My kids love this house, too. So, yes, I think it's a good idea that we all, that the Historic Preservation Committee meet regarding this and that even at some point, if you guys want to send a representative to a meeting so that we're all, not in agreement, because that's kind of hard, but at least on the same page and in the same realm for.
Yeah.
For town, because none of us would do these, these jobs. None of us would sit on these committees if we didn't love where we lived. And Mr. Harris would not have bought this property if he didn't, you know, want good things for independence. And so I think moving forward, if we all want good things for independence, we all kind of need to be living in the same realm as far as moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
One thing, if I could just add to, just a recollection of back when we started talking about this. And appreciate everybody being here to talk about this more, for sure. But it's, it's interesting, we actually prompted this conversation because Fred pointed across the street from our meeting and we recognized that Henry Hill's home wasn't even protected with any kind of overlay or anything. And so that's actually what prompted this conversation is how can we protect those structures more? So that was kind of the original thought behind looking at an additional overlay. I just wanted to comment on that just because I thought it was relevant here. But, yeah, I think that I would agree on working with Historic Preservation and waiting until after they've had a chance to talk about it. Certainly with all the confusion and kind of lack of clarity on some of it, I think that that would be a smart next step for us to have them take a look and kind of break down further what they think about. Regardless of the circumstances moving forward, what do they think about what we want that to look like as a town and all of those kinds of things, those discussions that they would normally have as a part of these types of changes? So anyway, I get a little bit long-winded when I'm not in person. So sorry for that, but thanks, everybody.
I think you still talk shorter than I did.
No, this is Corby. I think it is a good idea that we go ahead and continue this again until after the April 15th meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission and wait and see what their, what they, what their thoughts are, what they recommend. With that being said, do we, do I close this public hearing again? Or is it just continued a third or a second time, Karen and Fred?
Corby, this is Kate. I have a quick question.
Oh, is Kate?
Yes. I have a question for Fred before we close this conversation out. And looking at the proposed boundaries, kind of, I walked around this weekend of that neighborhood to kind of get a better sense of it. Can you give a quick background again on how those boundaries were decided? There you go. You're on mute.
Are you talking about the historic residential overlay?
Yeah, because, for example, I was a little bit surprised to see that the Henry Hill House wasn't included, but then the block across the street on the east side was included in that. And it just seems a little bit disjointed in terms of those boundaries.
So the historic residential overlay, it shouldn't be disjointed. Basically everywhere, it's pretty much on the edge that, and I don't have my map right up with me. Let me try and share my screen real quick. Hold on.
I guess, was it based on historic land use patterns? Or was it based on what they thought projected uses might be?
It was based on historic, well, and sort of projected. So, I mean, when we look at this, let me try and share my screen here. When we look at this map. Can you guys see my screen?
No.
No, I know what you're seeing right now. You're seeing that. All right. So when you look at this map, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So you can, these are the historic residential overlay locations. You can see they're on the periphery of downtown primarily. You can see, too, that they're in the mixed-use pedestrian-friendly commercial zones. Basically, because we identified that these were the highest likelihood of potential transition to, from residential uses to commercial uses. Now, each of these blocks, you can kind of see for the most part are on the edges of this mixed-use pedestrian-friendly commercial zone. This is second right here. This is second right across from, well, I should say, like, this is the old Mutarts Market right here. This is a seven-star convenience store. So down here, you've got a really nice historic structure right here. You've got a nice historic structure right here and you've got a bacon lot right here. So we identified the potential that something could go right there. And if it was a 35-foot tall or a 45-foot tall building built to the built-to line, that would be, that would be out of character for what is going on right there right now. This right here is the backside. This is Third Street. Like, the museum is right here. All of these are his, are homes right now. And so going in with a large building in there didn't feel like it made sense. If somebody wanted to go in with a dental office or something like that into one of those homes, we, we decided to keep the zoning based on the fact that somebody could go in and do a commercial use in one of those historic homes. So you can see that that's sort of that. This here is, where am I at? Here's elementary school. This is probably the post office right there. And these are the three homes beyond the post office.
Yep.
So here, this is actually Henry Hill's house right here. This is City Hall. Right? That's the City Hall building. You can see this is Henry Hill's house and this is that, that half block right beyond Henry Hill's house. Basically, all of those are historic homes and it didn't feel appropriate to transition into a commercial-style buildings in that area. So really, you can see for the most part, all of them are on the periphery of the mixed-use pedestrian-friendly commercial zone. There is this area right here, which has a couple of historic homes that the Historic Preservation Commission especially felt like keeping a small scale amongst these historic homes was important as well. So it got included over there, too. Now, this is a block that we're really talking about. This is actually Jennifer's lot right here. This is a house next to Jennifer's. And this is the lot that Mr. Harris is talking about. So really, see that that is a half block that really is, is, is a little bit different.
Gotcha. No, thank you. That helps. Just kind of give a little bit of background on that.
Cool. Did I stop sharing my screen? Good. Mr. Harris, did you have another question? I saw you raising your hand.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to just, I don't know, you know, we keep saying like to protect the homes or whatever, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear that the homes are still protected as far as, you know, they're not going to be just, nobody can just come and bulldoze one and build a building right now, those homes that are still sitting on the block. This would be more, this is just regarding the redevelopment of those properties. So those that are in the, the historic residential overlay will not be able to be developed in a way that's like a downtown building. They would have to be developed in a way that's like the residential that's there on that block. So you're kind of, for the future development or redevelopment, say, when this house that I have, that I think everybody probably is on the same page that that house is going to be removed. You know, when that's, when, when those other houses get to that point, if they do sometime, even if it's 100 years from now, you know, they're going to have that restriction for redevelopment there still as an overlay over those properties. So for me, it's, for me, it's the now. And for future, it's, you know, it's still going to be, if it gets in that residential overlay, those restrictions are going to be there. The current houses there are already protected in a way by the Historic Preservation, because they're not going to just allow them to tear them down.
No, I appreciate your comments. I, the way I am approaching this or that I look at it from a, from my standpoint is more shaping the character of our community and what is the best fit for our community. And I agree that we don't have the magic ball of looking at what is this, what is the community going to look, look like 100 years from now? I can probably guarantee that there'll be another code update at some point along the line just as the community changes and shapes itself. That's a pretty natural course of events. So I know, I can speak for me personally, I'm really looking at this from where do we shape future development and what's the appropriate scale? And I think Jennifer alluded to that a little bit in terms of, do we want to have a three-story, more commercial-looking building next to a residential-scale building? And where are the other appropriate places or other locations that our downtown might be growing and accommodating that sort of building or that sort of structure? And so that, just for clarification sake, that's the lens that I'm looking at this through in terms of shaping that development, whether it's the now and then also looking at what are the future steps we need to be putting into place to accommodate changes that may be coming down 50 years from now, you know, that we may not be able to predict right now.
All right, thanks, Kate. Any more discussion amongst the commissioners? Any questions?
Corby, this is Sally. I just wonder, sorry, this is Sally. I wonder if, I wonder if, as Jennifer mentioned, some of us, one or two, or all of us should participate in the Historic Preservation Commission's conversation on April 15th?
That would probably be a good idea. Are they going to do the go-to-meeting kind of thing like we're doing tonight? Or would they be meeting at City Hall? Or does anybody know? Or does anybody know?
They're going to be doing the, the go to meeting thing, but I'm not sure that the commission should be at the planning, at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. I'll have to double check on that because that might be an ex parte contact.
Oh, okay.
Find out.
That's, that's a good call, Karen. If you could check that out for us. If it's something that we can participate in or not would be.
Is there, who would be participating in something like that?
Well, I, I definitely could do that. I mean, I'm not, like I said, I'm not the tech, the real technological advancement here, but, uh, the more I think about that today, I did check out a, uh, camera microphone thing I could order from Amazon for a regular computer. Um, might go ahead and do that tomorrow and get that coming. And then maybe I can contact you Fred, we could do another test to see if I could do it through the computer rather than an iPad. It doesn't work or a phone that's a dinosaur smartphone.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I would have.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Um, potential question for either Fred or Karen. Would be if we're not able to, um, take part in any of that meeting or anything, would we be able to just observe it? I'd be happy to hear it and just, um, learn about the perspective of that committee, um, if not able to comment.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll, I will have to find out, but I'm probably could observe, but I don't know. Um, um. Certainly if the commission is going to be making a recommendation to you folks. You're going to be able to understand everything behind the, the recommendation. So I have a feeling if you were a viewer but not a participant, it might make a difference.
I have a question.
Okay. Did you have a question, Jennifer?
I do. Um, so.
Okay.
At the beginning of this meeting, right, I'm on the Historic Preservation Committee, but I live next door to the property that Mr. Harris purchased. So I made that known, right, that I was here as a resident of the town and why, but also that I'm part of that committee. So I'm just curious, like, I don't understand why anybody on the planning commission couldn't just come to our meeting as part of the public for independence. I'm just curious.
I, I don't know. I just know that there's, she, they may be able to, but they just might have to declare that this is all ex parte contacts. I don't know. I will have to look.
It may just have to do.
And Jennifer, it may be because your property is next door to this. And, um, you would at least have to declare a potential conflict of interest when you go to as a, as a historic planning commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah. And one distinction to Jennifer with this versus a normal meeting is that we actually have a public hearing open. So for us to close the public hearing like we did last week, um, we couldn't have any discussion about it outside of the meeting because we were going to reopen it tonight. Um, so we may be able to go and listen in, under these circumstances, not normal, but, um, because the hearing is open, we may, um, be able to go and be present to listen, but it might be a, a contact that we're not allowed to participate in that conversation because it's outside of the hearing, um, what we meet next to talk about this. Um, so since it's an actual hearing, any, any discussion about it has to happen in the public forum. Um, so we wouldn't want to talk offline even with good intentions.
Got it.
Okay, that, that's a good point, Kevin. So you'll check on that, Karen. If we could observe the meeting but not participate. You'll give us a recommendation. So when we come back for the May 4th meeting, we could declare ex parte contacts if we had to, and make sure it's all above board and legal and everything.
Yep.
Okay. Well, at this point, um. I mean, we know that, do I, this is included in the public hearing. What's the procedure for me to just postponing the public hearing again? And I believe last time we did a vote. That be procedurally correct again to do another vote to postpone the meeting or this hearing until, uh, May 4th, uh, planning commission meeting?
I believe so, but.
Yeah, we need a, we need a motion to, uh, postpone till a date certain, which is May, May 4th at 7 o'clock.
Okay. Who wants to take a stab at the motion?
This is Kevin. Um, I move, um, to continue the hearing until our May 6th meeting, um, where we can continue, um, reopening, continue the hearing on, uh, legislative amendment file number LA dash 2018 dash 04.
Right. Is there a second?
This is Sally. I'll second that, but I think Kevin had the wrong date.
Oh, did I? Sorry.
May 4th at 7 p.m.
May 4th.
Yes.
May 4th. Okay. Thank you, Sally.
Yeah.
All right. And Sally made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Harris, and definitely thank you, uh, Jennifer, Mr. Flores. And, uh, we invite you back to the May 4th meeting. You probably would be at the historic Preservation Commission meeting too. So we'll see you in about a month.
Okay.
When is the, when is the meeting for the HPC?
The 15th?
Uh, April 15th.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So, all right.
Are you first up now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We'll move on to, uh, the sign code revisions with Fred and a staff report.
Yeah, you bet. So, um. So, hey, uh, so you'll remember that as part of the historic preservation coding, you'll, you'll probably be like, haven't we talked about signs like a lot? Haven't we like gotten nowhere at this point? And I'll say, yeah, absolutely. That's exactly the point that we're at. We haven't gotten anywhere. But the thing is, I want you guys to sort of, um. And I, I guess I'll sort of just note the urgency of this, or if there's urgency of this. Now currently how we do signs is they're reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission when they're in downtown. Now there's two sets of codes currently. We have a set of codes in our development code. It's something like chapter, subchapter 58. And then the Historic Preservation Commission remove, or, uh, reviews the signs for the downtown area. Now if the Historic Preservation Code is adopted, then there's no sort of aesthetic or, uh, design standards or any sort of historic standards in place for signs in downtown. Also, I'll just sort of note that if we do that, uh, we are going to get to a position where we only allow three fourths of a square foot for every lineal foot of, of building front. Now, if you think about that and you got a 20 foot wide building, that's only a 15 foot wide sign. Um, if you're using a projecting sign, that is not a whole lot of signage for a business. And so especially when I started looking at it and thinking about it, I really am convinced that, um, we do have some problems with the way that our current sign code is written right now. And, um, it's something that we're going to want to try and address, uh, here. So what I tried to do is, um, sort of cut number three at a sign code. Uh, before I get to it, I'll sort of try and share my screen again. Uh, let me try and get to the actual, um, thing that I just, you hear. Uh. My little handout, you folks should have gotten it in your packet. Oh, come on. Where's the agenda? I'll show this to you. Now, when you, let me come in here and share my screen one more time. When you, yes, share please. All right. And then my sign code is right here. Sign code, sign code right here. So when you look at this, you can see it sort of went through and Kate encouraged me to do this originally was to actually look at how things are looking in downtown. And so certain buildings have, uh, small signs under, under the sign code alliance, allowance. And some are over the sign code allowance. Now here is an example of this, uh, building that's under the sign code allowance. You can see the general allowed sign size. Um, this is just a shorty little building. It's 13 feet wide. So the allowed sign size with that point 75 square foot allowance is a 9.75 square foot sign. If they're all wall signs, which they are in this instance, then you get 19.5 square feet. Now I'll just say that is not a whole lot of signage. Um, especially like as you're using signs to try and attract passing motorists. Generally, uh, you want to size the signs for the size of, uh, the, for the speed of travel that's going by, you know? So if you're walking by, you can have really small signs. Um, if you're, um, if you're driving by, you generally need bigger signs because you're trying to have them, um, oriented, uh, and attractive to cars. Now, so you can see, um, that is a small sign that's allowed under the code. Now here's an example of a, a building that's way over the sign code allowance. This is right next door. You can see with that awning out front, the allowed sign size that they are allowed is like 13.5 square feet. Uh, because they have the awning, they don't apply it to that, uh, 1.5 square foot allowance. Uh, per lineal foot of building frontage. Am I making sense with, with that requirement? Does that make sense? So if the building's 18 feet wide, uh, you essentially get one and a half times that amount for signs if they're all wall signs. If they're not all wall signs, then you get 7.5, uh, of that 18 feet. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Good. So you can see like instances like this, this is like way over the allowed, uh, sign amount. You can see that there, the signage is roughly, when you include the awning, it's about, uh, 30% of that overall facade right there. Um, this is an example that's under the tattoo shop. I mean, you can review all of these, but I mean, even stuff like this, this is probably over right now just based on the projecting sides that are coming out of the, uh, out of the building because it has the little tiny projecting signs which are coming, uh, from the facade and the areas where the, uh, pointer is showing. Can you folks see those? Um, because of those, because of those projecting signs, um, this, even this is probably over the allowed square footage amount uh, in the downtown area. Also, um, I mean, certain ones are under some even like this, this seems completely appropriate uh, for the building. This is not like an, an ordinate amount of signage in, in, um, in any means, but, um, but again, this is probably over the sign code allotment as it is right now. So, um, after looking at all of that, um, I think it's, I, I sort of became convinced that we, um, do have some issues with our sign code. Uh, I mean, it's just sort of, uh, apparent to me. One of the things is, yeah, now we don't have any sort of means to regulate aesthetics or design. Um, also, we don't really have, uh, an appropriate allotment of sign totals as it is right now. So that's, those are two of the issues that I've sort of identified. And that's kind of what I tried to do here is I tried to include some basic standards that I, that staff in the review of signs could look at. Um, and say yay or nay to, uh, under clear standards. Uh, but then also like sort of bump up the sign amount that's allowed. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thanks for explaining that.
One of the things that I should just make quite clear as well is right now under the current code, any signs in downtown have to go to a public hearing before the Historic Preservation Commission. One of the goals with this is to have this be a staff review where we can review something and say yay or nay to it based on a clear set of standards without folks having to go through a historic, historic Preservation Commission, uh, approval. So that's essentially the impetus to this. And then, you know, you're trying to like actually create a clear set of standards. And when you're doing that for science, it is kind of difficult. So you'll see what I tried to do here is just a completely different approach. I tried to orient this around goals rather than just standards. So you can see that my goals that I wanted to try and, um, orient around were legible, lit. And not, um, like, the kids are using the word lit, I'm like lit, lit signs. You get what I'm saying?
With electricity.
Like electricity, uh, uh, complimentary to history and complimentary to architecture. So you can see, uh, I tried to fold in some of the stuff that the Historic Preservation Commission was looking at, like some of the stuff about how to attach design to the historic structure if you're doing that. And then you'll see that I tried to incorporate some sort of sign totals as well. I also just, some of the legibility stuff, I also put in there because you know what? I've seen people make signs and put up signs that when you stand under the sign, you just can't see. And it's just, um, it's, that's a bum, that's a bummer to me when I see that, that, that when people fork out a whole bunch of money for a sign that's completely illegible, right? So, uh, so you can see some of the standards that I put in there for legibility, um, like, don't use a whole ton of font sizes and shapes and different styles. Have a single integrated shape, um, you know, don't get crazy. Put the signs on the same parts of the window rather than haphazard. So folks can understand it and use good contrast so people can go letters, stuff like that. And I tried to make them simple enough that it's not me being subjective with sign review. It's just a simple set of standards where you could look at it and say, yes, absolutely. I mean, that or no, absolutely. It doesn't meet that for some reason. The lit signs, you know, currently it, we don't, uh, basically the lit standards are essentially saying we encourage lit signs because, uh, lit sign is dark for a lot of the year. And so ultimately we would encourage lit signs. But one thing that I put in there is we don't allow rectangular cabinet signs like the, uh, like what you see everywhere. The, the signs, um, they're rectangular. They got the light bulb on the inside. A lot of times they're white. A lot of times you can see the bulbs inside of them. Uh, they just don't look appropriate for a downtown area. One thing I added here was, um, the allowance of cabinet signs that include cut out letters, you know, so you could internally light a letter. Um, but you couldn't, you just couldn't do it for a rectangle. So that's one thing, um, that I included in here. Um, one of the ones that I just, and I will take any advice that anybody has in regards to this one. The one C complimentary to history, I don't know how, I don't know how to do this section. This is like the hardest section to me. Basically what I wanted to say was, hey, make signs appear thick so they don't look super thin. Make them have a matte finish so they're not super glossy. Don't use unfinished materials as a primary design feature of your signs. And then I put vinyl or corrugated plastic signs are not considered as an appropriate perfect, permanent, uh, permanent, uh, sign for a downtown building, just to make that clear. Whoops, what am I doing? All right. And then, um, the last one is just complimentary to architecture. And this is really where it's talking about all the various sign sizes. And this is really, I gotta say that this is required by Kate, this is. Oh. Jason's telling me my papers sound like they're bumping into my mic. I apologize for that. They probably are. Sorry about that. Uh, so, uh, uh, the, 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 the last one, complimentary to architecture, one of the things that we talked about last time is you'll remember I had different sign sizes for both facades and windows. And they were sort of, um, they were sort of different, right? After looking at it, I really do think that we could go to sort of a different approach where we say, hey, you can have a certain amount of projecting sign for your building, three. you can have a certain amount of projecting sign for your building, three force square feet per linear portion of your frontage. That's your projecting sign total. And then we could also say you can have a certain proportion of your overall facade be signs. So if we look at, let me get back to my share of my screen thing. If we look at, uh, yep, my entire screen, share it. If we look at stuff like this, we can see that signs take up a limited proportion of that overall facade, right? About seven percent of that overall facade. Here it's about ten percent of that overall facade, right? Just sort of calculating it out, I timed out what the height and the, uh, width is. And I said, okay, signs take up about that proportion of the overall facade. You can see seven point one percent right there. So I think that we could say, okay, you get a certain amount of projecting sign from the building, but then you also get a certain proportion of actual signage on the facade itself. Does that make sense as an approach? What are your thoughts?
Makes sense to me, Fred.
Yeah, me too, Fred. That makes sense.
Okay. Because, um, because one of the things that Kate said last time was she was sort of, the way I was kind of calculating it and considering it, some people might have more of a benefit from having larger windows as in comparison to smaller facade sizes. And rather than saying, parsing those out, just essentially look at the flat surface of the building and say, okay, you can't exceed whatever percent we want to say. In the draft, you'll say, you'll, you'll see I included eight percent of the building facade because I felt like that might be an appropriate amount. You guys can talk me out of it. If you want to go higher or lower, I'm fine with that. Just, that's something to consider. I just included that because I thought that that made some sense. Now, um, you'll note that I still, um, in this draft, I still don't allow, uh, lettering on the front portion of an awning just because, um, I think that makes sense. Uh, on the, on the angled portion of the front part of an awning, you'll see too that I put in there that no more than twenty percent of a window could be included as, um, as window signs. And then I have specific standards about how freestanding signs might work. So anyways, I'm showing these to you and I guess I'm curious. Am I getting closer to where we should be going with these, with this draft? Literally, this is something where after the first time we discussed it, I like went back and I tried to really rethink a lot of what I, what I had put out there. And I tried to spend some time sort of just like simmering on it and looking at signs and whatnot. And this is sort of the approach that I think kind of makes some sense. And I'm curious what you folks think about it.
I guess I have a naive question and maybe I shouldn't have answered to already, but so beforehand, signs run through Historic Preservation Committee Public Hearing or Public Committee. And presumably pretty loose criteria and or none. Or, okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So ba- so basically what happens with that is like, I mean, I mean, it's like the worst of both worlds, right? You might get some circumstances where it goes through, uh, an inappropriate sign goes through just fine. And you might get some circumstances like we did with a particular business in downtown, which, when it was a completely appropriate sign and they had trouble with it. So that's part of the reason why we really wanted to bring the review in-house. But in bringing it in-house, like we also want to have some standards that we can actually review it, uh, by.
So Fred, I, I think that's a good direction to go in. I would say at first glance with this, I can appreciate, and I think is needed, that the staff has a really easy criteria to follow and, and also to, when they're talking to business owners that come in and say, why can't I have the sign? You can point to something and it's really black and white to say, this is why this isn't allowed. It's outside of the sign limit or whatever it may be. But I, I think also making it really easy for business owners to understand. And when I read through this, it's like, well, it can't be any more than eight percent or this or that. I think most of your business owners are going to be like, just tell me how big I can have my sign. Like, I don't want to calculate percentages or if I have this, but not that, the total has to be that. So that might just be some food for thought of, um, maybe going more to some universal. It's a tricky thing. I, signage codes are super hard. And I think it's that fine line of kind of plain designer versus, uh, so I, and flipping back to the legibility part of it where you can't have any more than two fonts and the sizes and the contrast. If you have a business that's moving into town and let's say they've worked extensively with a logo designer and they've got a branding package and it's got three fonts on it, they're not going to want to change their whole entire branding strategy just because our code doesn't allow more than two font sizes. And so that's where I think it does get a little subjective of, um, I don't know, maybe it can get too black and white where you could look at somebody's sign and it's like, wow, that's a really cool looking sign. It's got three different fonts. But actually it's really legible. So then it's, that's not a black and white criteria for a staff member to sit down and do. So, um, and then even things, boy, like, you know, it has to be one inch thick. One inch thick of what type of material and is that interior or is that exterior? I know a lot of businesses are switching to the vinyl signs just because they are, frankly, they're fairly economical. And if they're installed right, like Jubilee, you know, if you think of signs, and I think the one that Valkyrie just put up there, more the vinyl decal versus like a, they don't have any thickness to them. So this, this is more just kind of food for thought. I'm, I'm thinking through in my head what, I, I think business owners will have a lot to comment on the, with the draft proposals.
Just it shows how complex this is too, because I looked at it as I was going through and all your examples, Fred. Wow, this looks, this looks great. And then from my perspective of not owning a business downtown, I hadn't thought of most of what Kate just said. It's like, oh yeah, there's just a whole lot going on here with, um, with signs. So interesting. I, um, yeah, I can appreciate that there's a lot of challenges. I'm not even aware of on this one, so.
And, and I think, um, right, because the next step with this would be to take it to the business owners to get input at some point, right? Before it's a final, um, and so just facilitating more that more like, hey, we're here to get input and thoughts, I think would be helpful. And, and to be honest, I think, uh, the timing of that would be super important given the current, um, state of affairs for our small business owners are really, they're starting to panic a little bit. And so coming, coming down the line, even if it was like a month or two from now and saying, hey, we want to review this code with you on the signage. I think people would just, the timing of it would be really.
I get, I get it. It's going to put us in a really strange position though, because I mean, we're gonna, I mean, it sort of gets back to the point of where we're, I mean, it's, I mean, where are we going to go? Cause with this at a certain point, because at a certain, uh, I mean, seriously, if we just default to the standards that are in fifty-eight, then it's gonna, it's not gonna be. I mean, I don't know how to do that because at a certain point, I'm going to have to say no difficult, like just based on size. And it's not even based on design at all. It's like, oh, you want to do a projecting sign, you can only have a nine square foot sign or whatever like that. So you got, you know, and, um, I don't know. So that's sort of where, I mean, I get, I get you completely, Kate.
Yeah, I'm in favor of doing updates. It, I just, I think it's, I think we should prepare for there being a tremendous amount of input, a lot of questions. And then also like, hey, can I be grandfathered in? I mean, I think of the Valkyrie, right? They just put up their new sign. It probably doesn't meet the new sign standards that are going to be coming down the line. And so.
Talking about the one that's on the balcony?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably won't even, like, I mean, they haven't gotten Historic Preservation Approval of it either. Like, I mean, here's the thing too, is like, we don't allow signs like that now, like we don't allow banners.
So even the one in their window?
The one in their window is fine because it's painted in a window. And this says, this code right here says too, if you're putting a sign in a window, um, it's fine. It's allowed outright, but you can't cover more than twenty percent of a window.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, I think some of that.
So the, I mean.
Yeah. So.
So I mean, so.
So paint is fine with vinyl, isn't?
No, the, so the vinyl, uh, you know, that's a good point because, yeah, it says vinyl, but it should, I mean, vinyl decals in a window would, are completely something that's fine, like, uh, and it's like, that would be fine to me, but what that's trying to say is like the banner signs.
Okay, I got you, like a parade banner type.
Right, like at, like, uh, the tap station.
Got you, got you, got you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yep. Okay, I got you.
So I mean, would you, so my question for you guys is, would you feel more comfortable? I mean, I can try, I mean, I can try and figure this out even a little more where I'm trying to, like have a simpler draft to go out and I get you to completely where this is not going to be something where it's like, hey, we're in a recession, uh, let's talk about signs. That's not the thing that I want to do at all. Like, it's probably going to be a little bit of a, a Wild West for a little bit with signage. But I mean, I, I do want to acknowledge the fact that this is going to be something that we're going to have to do at a certain point.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think at some point we just have to rip the Band-Aid off and, and say, we got to get the feedback. But I, I, I literally think there are Main Street businesses, the panic is starting to set in. And they're not even, they don't even care about signs right now. They care about even if they can keep their doors open.
Right, I got you.
Yeah.
I got you.
I'm going to ask another, maybe general naive question about sign codes generally. I mean, just in other places, are they always very mathematical or are they open for? I understand providing a backstop for staff to be able to point to really specific criteria, rules, regulations, et cetera. But what's the, I guess, is there precedent to have a little bit more, um, at the, at the sort of, you see what I'm trying to get at? I'm just sort of a little bit less, um, prescribed and a little bit more open to interpretation.
Yeah, you know, we definitely do. We could definitely do that somewhere, where, and I mean, we could do something like that where if, if you guys don't feel comfortable with the prescriptive nature of it, um, what we could do is add sort of a backstop mechanism in there where if somebody wants to go, um, beyond this, they could come to you guys for like a sign code review outside of, uh, outside of the code background. And that would be something that we could totally do, um, if that's something that you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's funny, it's sort of the, the way we are pitching constantly independence is like, this is a place where it's sort of like you, you know, the world is your oyster, you know, this is a can do attitude. We support entrepreneurs of all stripe, we, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And it's just feel, it does feel a little funny then to think about like a sign code that is so sort of airtight and not open to interpretation or kind of any kind of, I don't know, perceived creativity, et cetera, that just doesn't necessarily jive with maybe the attitude of, of what I think about when I think of independence, I guess.
Okay, so, okay, so how would you envision a sign code then?
Yeah, sorry to laugh.
Like an easy application where it's like, if your sign code meets this, this and this, you're going to get basically a staff stamp of approval. But if you want to propose something outside of that, it is going to have to be another level review or something so that it puts it a little bit in the business owner's hands of saying, great, I got it. If I'm in these parameters, I'm pretty much good to go. I send in a sample of it, the staff looks at it and check it off. But so my example of a, let's say a company that's moving in from out of town and they go, well, we don't quite meet the standards, but we still feel like our signage is appropriate. They would have a chance of being able to bring that forward to a review panel of some sort.
I like. No, go ahead.
That's a good idea, Kate.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kate. I like having the idea of, um, you know, promulgating, we have these four standards and we expect business owners to, you know, make their case that they are meeting each of the four standards and have some kind of basic outline of what we mean by those four standards and have them submit their proposal and make their case for it, but with an additional review then beyond the city staff.
Okay.
I guess I want to, I would think about it. I would act as if. So I, if I have a new business to town, like what Kate was saying, and like, you know, what's the, what's the process that I'm, what are the hoops I'm jumping through anyway? Um, and is this an additional hoop or is this just an, it's sort of folded into something else? And I'm, I'm sort of asking a question even of Kate, um, of sort of like, what am I, if I'm opening a Main Street business, what does that look like from the city side of things and trying to just streamline that? Just because I think, you know, we are a really, uh, open for business kind of place and I wouldn't want to impact that at all.
Right.
I, I think now that we have a business registration in place, it might be an easier way to kind of catch some of that. But I'll be really honest, nobody ever asked me about any signs and I just, I put signs up in the window. So I don't know, like, granted mine technically are all on the inside, but, uh, I don't know that there's a consistency to how it's done right now, um, to be honest. So I, I think having some sort of process when somebody comes into town and is saying, hey, I'm going to open a business, that somebody gives them some sort of notification prior. And I think this was a little bit of an issue with skippers, if I remember right. But they kind of were like, I don't know, we just put the signs up. And then somebody came along and, and don't quote me on that because I don't know if it's a hundred percent accurate, but I don't know if there's a way that when businesses are coming into town, we can kind of preemptively say, welcome to town. Make sure you register. Let's talk about your signage and here's some other things that you need to be aware of.
That's a great idea, Kate.
I don't need to jam you up on, like, I know you put, you've, you've already struggled and stressed about this sort of a lot. And I don't mean, I don't mean to rain on your parade at all or just like add to it like, ah, stupid planning commission, like prolonging this process. But I just, yeah.
No, it's, um, I mean, it's completely fine. It's completely fine. I, um, yeah. I, I guess, I mean, here's, here, I mean, here was sort of my thought. I'm just, uh, I'm just gonna, here's sort of my thought. And I mean, here's something that I, I was trying to balance. And I mean, so let's keep on talking about how this might actually, um, work. So, I mean, um, adding additional sign allowance, right? So that's one thing, um, that this is trying to do is because, I mean, seriously, if I'm regulating based on the code right now, then I got to tell somebody who's got a completely appropriately sized sign, no. You can't, you can't put in, you can't put up a projecting sign larger than that amount or whatever it might be. And so my question is, uh, I, I guess that was sort of what I, I was trying to get to is like, how, how do you ensure that as you're allowing additional? I mean, I suppose too, we could just say, yeah, additional signage is allowed. But I mean, that was sort of what I was trying to weigh. Um, but I mean, that was sort of what I was trying to weigh was like, put a couple of more standards on the signs, but then also allow more signs, right? Does, does that make sense?
You mean more signs per business?
Yeah, because right now you're limited to the amount of signs that you're gonna have. I mean, that's sort of what I was trying to say when I was saying. You, you, you were allowed right now point seven five square foot for every linear foot of furniture you have. And when you do that for a downtown business, which is twenty feet wide, that is like a tiny sign if you're going projecting sign. Um, and so I, I guess that's what I was trying to do is trying to allow more signs while at the same time sort of like saying, let's not get crazy here. Let's actually put some sort of bounds around this.
Could we do? Oh, sorry, Fred.
No, it's fine.
Why is that? Because there are, like, I think of Naughty Noodle, right? That's a tiny, you know, that's smaller versus say Independence Grill or even Indy Commons. Could we say that every business can have at least a minimum size? Sign. So I mean, it's like Naughty Noodle will say, hey, I can at least have something that's comparable to what other businesses can put on their storefronts still within scale of I don't know. It's, it's a tough, but then you have like the Little Mall on Main, multiple tenants in there. Right? So they're gonna want to have probably a sign outside, which they kind of do now with the projecting signs, which are consistent. I mean, I give them credit. They're at least, you know, all the same size and consistent in terms of how they're placed and what they look like, but um, yeah, it's a tough. It's a tough call.
Okay, what I'll do is, uh, I mean, I get what you guys are saying. What I'll try and do is, uh, I might simmer on this for a, a couple more months and, uh, try and distill this down to like, um, the bare essence and maybe remove some of the design, um, stuff out of it. And, and just go more to, um, more to size. I, I really wanted to get away from size alone because, you know, when you talk about size, like so many people say, oh, great, uh, I can have a forty square foot sign and they don't consider anything about, you know, uh, so anyways, I, I think trying to balance that is gonna be something as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. It needs to be something more than just, you can have X number of square footage and, you know, have at it and do whatever you want, whether it's neon or whatever. I, I'm not, yeah, I agree.
Well, Fred, I think I can speak for all the commission. Go ahead, Sally.
Oh, I just had a final question for Fred, uh, and on a, a process question of, um, what does the Historic Preservation Commission feel about this? Are they fine with washing their hands of it to the
Yeah. They were kind of loathe to let it go, but I think that they, and I mean, you understand it's like giving away responsibility, right? Um, I think that they under, once, once I told them, yeah, we're gonna get this into an, uh, another code and we'll have a set of standards where, where stuff that you were insuring, uh, is getting checked. I think that they were fine with it.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, okay, so let me ask you philosoph, a couple of philosophical questions. Do we care at all about the design of signs?
Yes.
Yes.
I would care, yes.
What sort of design features do we care about in signs?
Clutter.
How do you really clutter, Kate?
I know, exactly. Like I
You know it when you see it.
Yeah, that sounds right. You kind of know it when you see it, like the seven star sign, like they put that up and I was like, oh, somebody needs to help this business out.
A-actually, I, I like your, um, the following standards where it's like this, not this, like examples of
Yes.
Actually, I think that's useful. Um, and, and and I, I, I would, it's almost like we encourage this kind of sign. We discourage this kind of sign and we don't, you know, the multiple fonts thing, I don't actually, I think, or the the one that where it's like cola and sun bread and like that you have on the, I have it open right here, so I'm sorry, I keep looking at it.
That's clutter.
Yeah, I, I actually, I mean, I like those, those kinds of standards. The, the, the specific kind of like square footage and percentage and stuff like that feels very, um, yeah, I don't know. It's just like, I don't, who's got time? And I, and I, and I'm so sorry to say that and I hate to be, I know you put a lot of thought into it.
No, it's, it's completely fine because I hate, I, I honestly hate standards like that, like I just, I mean, when, when you look at a lot of sign codes, they're all like that, where it's like, uh, you get X amount of square signage for this. What I actually thought was cool about this was, I mean, and I didn't find another example of it anywhere. It's just go onto the facade, like, okay, you take your facade size, you take eight, eight percent of it or whatever, and you say that's your sign amount. I, I actually felt like that actually makes some sense and I, I didn't see it any, anywhere else. Um, but you could totally go to like, uh, uh, a purport, uh, or like just a number and say, um, you get this amount of square footage. Um, I mean, we could do that as well. It's just kind of weird, you know, I was up, I'll tell you a story because I like stories. Uh, I was up in, uh, um, I was up on Woodby Island in Washington and I was planning for a really tiny little community out there. Um, and their standard was twenty square feet of signage, period, per business. And it was like, if somebody came in with twenty-one square feet, it was like, nope, can't do it. It was just so restrictive. But they could sort of get away with that because everybody was walking in the community. If people were driving down Main Street, they were going super slow. There was no highway through it. The fact that we have like, uh, Main Street going through the town, you know, um, it seems like we need to allow additional allowance for the front of buildings so people can actually have some larger signage on it and have a projecting sign. Um, and right now I would say that our standards are not equipped to allow that. And so I just don't, I don't know how we, how we can get there.
That's very helpful, by the way, that little bit right there. That's very helpful to understand where you're, what you're thinking about when you're think, when you're addressing this.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, like I said, Fred, I was gonna say that all of us on the commission, all the planet commission members really appreciate the time and effort you put into this. And, you know, when I read the agenda for this and that, oh, signs, okay, that'll be pretty simple to discuss. And it's turned out to be way more than what I think any of us thought it would be. And yeah, like all your work on the code development and simplifying that is, you know, I thought that was, that was a lot of work and a lot of difficulty and that worked out really well. Um, I think you're definitely on the right track here. So another question I have real quick is, when we talked about the economic impact on our businesses, what's going on right now? We wait a few months, uh, to talk to them, you know, with, with signage and things like that. But once we get the sign, uh, program adopted, do we go back to the businesses that are not in compliance? And have them change their signs or do we just allow them to keep their signs? Or have you thought that far?
I don't know. Well, we, I haven't thought that far because you know what? I know that right now we have some signs in downtown that are not in conformance with our current code. Um, like all my kids do the Shaolin Campo, um, and I know that that guy put up a a banner sign that is not something that we would allow. Um, we don't allow banner signs as permanent signs. And right now I know that we have at least three of them in downtown. Um, so, uh, so I don't know what we're gonna do. Like, I'm pretty loathe to be working on enforcement nowadays. I mean, that's just not what I want to do.
No, I, I would say definitely we'd have to be it, it would definitely be month, you know, months from this until we get our feet back under us and everything is getting back to a more normal state. But then, then I, I think, you know, biz, people that want to come and bring a business to town, you know, we, they see our sign, adopted sign policy and they go, well, why is that guy down the street? Why is his sign like that when I, you know, that's what I want, but, but I can't do it. And I don't know, yeah, it'd be pretty, pretty hard to go to these businesses, but, uh, um, yeah, I guess that's another, another bridge across.
Sign enforcement and is just like literally one of those things that like just completely drives you nuts. We don't allow, um, what's called feather signs, you know, the ones that look like a feather and they blow in the wind. We don't allow those things. And we see one go up and I swear, once one goes up, we see like eight of them through the community. It's like people will see a sign and they're like, oh, that's a good idea. Uh, and then they'll put one out, uh, so. Uh, so yeah, we're always sort of chasing signs.
I think another thing that's awful is, um, you know, for the example of Sojourn, right? They have on their awning. And I know Lisa wants to take it off because then she, she is now leasing that building. But I think it's like twenty-five hundred dollars or something for a new awning. And she's like, I don't, I don't have twenty-five hundred dollars for a new awning. And then whose responsibility is it? Is it the previous owner, the building owner, or the new business tenant? In terms of enforcement of something like that.
Right, yeah. I mean, that's just horrible situation and, uh, uh, I mean, that's why sort of my position is let's just not even allow those uh, anymore, like on the front awning because, you know, you hate to get in a position like that. And at a certain point, the awning gets faded too, you know, awning just, so, I don't know. So yeah, that's sort of my position with that is let's just not even allow that.
Okay. Well, I think we've, we've discussed this pretty thoroughly.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot more difficult than you think it is going to be. You know, like I said, I look at the agenda for tonight and I go, okay, yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward. We won't have to spend much time on that at all. And you delve into it and there's way more complicatedness to it than you think. So I guess, um, is your plan and get, kind of rework part of your, your wordings in there and then come back to us at the May fourth meeting?
No, it'll probably be longer than, uh, May, May fourth. It will probably be some, uh, I don't know, this is, you know, the last, the first time we talked about it, I sort of went away from it for a while and I just was really looking at signs to try and actually figure out what worked in a downtown area.
Um, right.
It will, it will be sort of similar. I mean, but I mean, we are gonna eventually go out to the public with this. I agree with Kate though, that has probably got to be a while before we do that. And I don't want to take something that you guys aren't happy with to the public in the first place. It's like, I'd like to actually get to a point where you, where you folks kind of feel at least a little bit comfortable with it. But then knowing that it will get further cha, uh, further shaped by people, so.
You know, sooner or later you'll come to us that we'll have to approve this in a, on an amendment form then. Would there be a public hearing with that then? Or is this something that doesn't have to go like to a public hearing?
Nope, there'll be a public hearing associated with it.
Okay, okay. Well, if it's one of those things where it's, it's not a requirement to get it done in the next month or two months or even three months, I, I would say, let's just, let's just table it, put it on the back burner for right now and, uh, we'll see with the next five, six months brings, we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
But so everybody else, maybe, how's everybody else feeling?
Yeah, that seems totally reasonable.
I agree.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, same here.
All right. Okay, well, just keep up the good work, Fred. We appreciate what you do and, and, uh, under the circumstances of what's going on in the world, that's, uh, we'll just deal with it when we can.
Yeah, alright, I mean, yeah. So hey, Corby, at the next meeting, can everybody hear me? So at the next meeting, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that we are gonna have another public hearing. It's gonna be on the accessory dwelling unit standards that you guys looked at. So that public hearing is, uh, next month on the May fourth meeting as well. So just have that sort of on your radar.
Okay, well, like I said, when, uh, I'm gonna investigate this camera microphone deal that hooks into our main computer and hopefully we can figure this out. Yeah, I feel like there again, I'm setting up smoke signals here tonight and, uh, that's what you get for being an old guy, I guess. Okay, any other? Yeah, I'm, I'm crying sometimes too here. Uh, is there any other new business we need to discuss tonight?
Nope.
Okay, if that's the case, I'll hear a motion for, uh, a, a motion, uh, hear a motion for adjournment then.
Subdued.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Close. Okay, meeting is adjourned.